Mr. Gibson.
Please call our role.
Mr. Gibson.
Here.
Dr. Ward.
Here.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Crisco.
Here.
Mr. Bizani.
Here.
Mr. Nikos.
Here.
All present.
We ask that you stand as a allegiance of dedication in our pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Father, it's once again that we call upon your most holy and everlasting name just to say thank you, Lord. Thank you, God, for this day. God, we thank you, dear God, for just allowing us to come out to this meeting tonight, dear God, and to discuss the business of this county. God, we ask you, God, for wisdom, knowledge, and revelation, God. God, we ask you, dear God, that we do as your word says, Lord, that everything that's said and done be done in decency and in order. God, we ask you just to continue to be a hedge upon this county. Keep us under the shadows of your wings, for this is our prayer in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on. Public comment period. We ask that you comment, or if you would just limit your minutes, to limit your time to three minutes, and only speak to the topics pertaining to our work session agenda. Public comments. One, twice. That's it. Ms. Steele, I mean, Ms. Cronin, did you have anything? Nothing? Okay. All right. Okay, well, we'll move on then to our work session agenda and our budget discussion.
Sir, Mr. Chair, there's a packet of information for you that we've prepared today and are finished preparing today, and we'll have this posted for the public, but we thought that it might help with organizing some of the discussion and also following up on information that you all requested. So if it's allowable, we'll go ahead and start with that. And so I asked Ms. Legg if she would talk about the utilities fund, and she's got a couple of additions to share with you. It's right here.
Oh. I'm sorry. Well, then you, I don't know. Oh, do you want to?
You skip.
Okay. So I'm just going to give a couple of high-level updates and some information based on some previous meetings, and then, of course, I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any additional information. So to summarize, a lot of what you've heard from me over the last couple of months, borrowing needs to occur in FY '26 if we're going to address some very much-needed capital needs. You have seen a 10-year capital plan from staff that amounts to about $60 million. And in order to take care of those, we are going to have to borrow money. The fund balance, as I've shared with you before, the utilities unassigned fund balance is depleted and is projected to have a balance of about $27,000 by the end of this fiscal year. This needs to be built back up as quickly as possible because there are, there is no additional funding should we have any additional major repairs. And without this fund balance, right now, the development fund is our emergency fund, and then should something catastrophic happen, then the county's general fund would have to take care of that. So right now, it's going to help with any additional emergencies, or projects would have to be delayed if we choose not to borrow. We continue to go into unknown growth with the reserves. I believe we're going into our third budget year without the development that we had expected and anticipated, and not knowing how things are going to be going, we may need to reduce the need for additional increases, we may need to increase them, we're just not sure. But if you recall, the last time I spoke with you, we were assuming a 10% growth in development fund based on a 10-year average of about 23%. So while I feel we're not quite maxed out at it, I feel that is a good number for us to, to estimate. So we have a public hearing on April 1st for the 14% increase that you all heard from me before. Each percentage increase in the rates, as they are right now, net us about $36,000 in additional revenue. With the FY '26 budget, we need at least $500,000 just to cover the operating costs. So $500,000 in additional revenue just to cover the operating costs. Any additional borrowing that we do, those payments will not be due until FY '27. So again, you have seen some of this before, but I know I have provided you so much information over the last couple of months. So the FY '26 proposed rate increase for water customers only, so this is based off of that 14% rate increase that has been advertised for public hearing on April 1st. And as a reminder, what I have done is broken this down by consumption tiers, and the 9,000 to 15,000 gallon tier, for lack of a better word, is averaged, and then the over 15,000 gallons is also averaged, because then it gets very, very messy with individual meters registering just this versus this. You can see we've broken down by the number of customers in each level. Again, as a reminder, all of this data was called from the FY '24 complete cycle of billing and consumption.
Ms. Legg, just to remind everyone, the zero to 2,000 includes those customers that are not hooked up, and they're less than 2,000, correct?
That is correct. So these, this are, these are a list of all active accounts, so if they are, if they have access to our system, but they are not using the water, they're charged that minimum, that base rate. So 86% of all water-only customers use 5,000 gallons or less. 94% of those are residential. So same spreadsheet for water and sewer customers, we have about half the number of water and sewer customers as we do just water-only customers. Again, same thing, you can see the breakdown by customer, 80% of all water and sewer customers use 5,000 gallons or less. You know, you've heard me talk about before 5,000 gallons as a single-family home, so it's really difficult for us to be able to say the average home uses X, Y, and Z. So the 5,000 gallons, what I did was I went back into my own account when I was on water and sewer and said, this is what my family of four used, and 5,000 gallons was high. But without us knowing how many individuals are in any given house, it would be very difficult for us to say what the average residential meter uses. So this is the list of the capital projects that are proposed to start in FY '26. It is a total of $2,095,635. So this includes the motor control center, which is a project that was supposed to have started this year and has been delayed because we do not have the funding to support it. The Gloucester Street and Clements Avenue water line replacement, same thing, was, should have been done this year and is being delayed. Pump station upgrades, this is the design, so this will start the process of designing pump station 13 replacement, the design of the collection line upgrades that need to happen with pump stations 11 and 13. The million-gallon storage tank at the water treatment plant, this would be the design cost. Tillage Heights water line replacement, this is actually a two-year project with the same amount of money over two years. Tillage Heights is down in Gloucester Point, so that same general area where Colony Circle line replacement that we just did is that entire area there. This was identified in the master plan and was much further out in the 10-year plan, and we have since moved it up. And then pump station generators or permanent bypass pumps, we have nine pump stations that are currently without either a generator or a permanent bypass pump. So this would take care of two, and the plan was to do two per year until we get to the ninth. So again, the proposed debt funding would be summer or fall of 2025, so we would not actually have to start paying this back until FY '27. And then this is just a follow-up to Ms. Steele's presentation, and this slide has been updated based on feedback from the budget presentation. So as the utility fees as proposed with the 14% increase, this is what the impact looks like over five years for a 5,000-gallon customer. The top spreadsheet is water only, the bottom spreadsheet is water and sewer customer. So you can see a water customer who uses consistently 5,000 gallons a month, over five years will see an increase of $35.06 to their bill, which is an increase of 70% over five years. And water and sewer, they will see a $53.02 increase at the end of five years with a 70% increase. This assumes, again, that it is a 14% increase the first year, 13 the second year, 11, 10, and 8. And this slide shows you the alternative, the, the alternate scenario that Ms. Steele presented to you with the budget presentation. And this assumes using $813,000 of the development fund balance, and that ballot, that account currently has, is expected to have $1.3 million at the end of this year. So using $813,000 in FY '26 to pay down debt. So utilities currently has two sets of debt. One is refinanced from the RO construction, the RO plant, and the other one is AMI. So the $813,000 would go towards paying off the reverse osmosis debt. And then it assumes that there is a general fund supplement of the same amount for the four years after that. So those rate increases start smaller, so they're 4% for a couple of years, and then it goes to 8, 10, and 11 after that. So again, we've given you the same thing to compare versus what the, the proposed rates are. So a 5,000-gallon customer would see a $21.39 a month impact at the end of five years for a 43% increase for water only, and $32.33 for water and sewer customers. In both situations, and no matter which way the board chooses to go after the public hearing, we will absolutely have to continue to monitor revenues and expenditures so very closely. You know, we could start to see some sort of growth in our development that's over and above what we're planning. There's just a lot of unknowns. We haven't been able to realize any of the efficiency savings from AMI yet, and by the time FY '26 starts, they should all be in the ground, and we should have a better handle on that, but we just, we don't have any way of knowing yet. So that is the end of utilities. I'm happy to answer any questions, provide additional information, or if there are things that you would like me to continue to look at and research and bring back to you, I'm happy to do that as well.
How much, how much extra does HRSD charge, and is it a tiered system also?
Oh, of course, I didn't print that one out. HRSD, if I am not mistaken, their additional fee is, I want to say $45 and some change. I would have to double-check that and whether or not it's tiered.
It's been a while since I set on the HRPDC. To my recollection, it was not tiered, and it does not have oversight, meaning HRSD next year is currently, what'd you say, 45 and some change?
I think it's 45, 70.
Next year, they could go, come back and go, well, now it's 52 and some change. They have had the most exorbitant rate changes and increases of anything in the last 13 years, because I believe when I first got on here, HRSD was charging me around 19 bucks, and now it's up to 45. So it's a, it's appointed, they don't have the oversight that a lot of the other agencies do, and it's going to just continually to increase with their SWIFT program that they're currently implementing.
So whether it's the over 15,000 gallons or 2,000 gallons, it's roughly 45?
I believe so, yes.
So, but based on the 12 years we've been on here, 13 years, the rate increase we would have would be significantly higher too, over 12 years.
But correct me if I'm wrong, the report that was referred to back in 2012 when we did raise rates, if we kept up with that formula, the cost now, if you follow, that would be much higher than what you're proposing today, is that correct?
It would be higher. I don't know that it would be substantially higher, although that's probably relative as well. Yes, if we had done the 3% annually after those first two 5%, I believe when I looked at the 5,000-gallon usage, that monthly bill would probably be around $60 in this year.
Just looking at our website, and if I'm reading this right, it says $8.28, or yeah, $8.28 per 100 cubic feet of water or a minimum of 30 cents per day, whichever is greater, which most people would have no idea how to figure out a bill on that.
Right. It's, so it's 775, 100 cubic feet per 1,000 gallons, and yeah, it's, you get a bill from HRSD.
So that sounds, that sounds like. Like it's on consumption basis.
It looks like, it looks like it is by consumption basis. We just pulled up a bill.
That's one of your other reports I saw with HRSD.
Right. So the, the issue with this is this is the report from the HRPDC where they actually compare the rates, but when they're comparing them, they are only looking at 5,000 gallons, so that HRSD amount is going to be the same. But yes, it does seem to be consumption-based.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your presentation. In the alternative of these two options, if, if nothing was done, do you have any, I know it's difficult to predict the, the future on, on the integrity of your system, but what's, what's the sense of the lifespan of the system and the, the risks of catastrophic failure or days without water like Richmond? I mean, what, what are we talking if we just continue to take no action?
Well, if, if you take no action, one, there is no fund balance to support any of these repairs. I will say that in the last six to eight months, we have had three repairs that were unplanned that are in the $30,000 to $60,000 range. We have another one planned for Mark Pine Road that is about $35,000. So we have a system up here in the courthouse and down at Gloucester Point that is very old. I would not want to wait at all. I would want to have a plan to start replacing these lines. I don't have much confidence in how long some of these older sections of pipe will last. And while I may not be an engineer, I certainly trust and believe my staff in the field, and they're the ones with the eyes on the system all the time, and when they're nervous, I'm nervous.
When we think about what we saw from the pictures from the high school when they excavated their lines, those lines are not quite as old as the ones at the point at the courthouse, so we're talking about lines that are pretty old and crumbling.
Yeah.
Okay.
The second topic that I believe there's a little bit of follow-up on is the dealing with compensation. The compensation study is underway and is projected to be completed for the Jan. 3rd Board of Supervisors' presentation, and if it doesn't make it, it'll make it for the July one. All of our positions are being evaluated for competitive pay and proper placement within our own pay, pay plan. The budget reserve that the proposed budget includes is a 2.3% reserve bank of what our salary base is. Our proposed COLA is 3%, and our step is the .66, which is divided between tenure and experience, .33% for each, and those are only for grades 1 through 23. And then, thank you. I mentioned in the weekly report that we've had some awareness of some safety issues that we need to address in our staffing, and we would like to go ahead and address those in this fiscal year, and that's going to mean that we need to add another $37,731 that Maria and I have not had a chance to work through where we can find those dollars because the budget is so tight. But this is something that, once you're made aware of safety concerns with your employees, you want to make sure that you do address them, and these are in, these are part-time work as required employees who are working by themselves, and this would provide a second person, so it would be a buddy system. The, wanted to make sure, I think that's there, but in cases we, you know, prepare for the revised budget or the public hearing, if there was any concern about the sheriff's position, I've heard, feels like it's, feels like there's a consensus from you all, but if there's differently, if you can let me know. And then I don't think that I have done my job in representing the department heads well enough yet. For those who turned in new employee requests, you know that they're not in the, in the budget, but I wanted to make sure if, or find out from the board if there's any of the department heads you'd like to hear from, and you can tell me tonight, tell me later. But I do recall a number of years ago that the animal control position, which was not in the budget, came up and was funded because of, of support from the board. And I just, again, these are positions that each of these department heads felt were very important and wanted to submit. And before we jump on to capital, any questions or concerns or anything that you can think of that you'd like us to find out about compensation?
These are new positions.
Yes.
So my guess, my, my first question is, do we have, are these departments operating at full capacity, meaning do they have other openings that we are trying to fill? And you don't have to answer that tonight. I mean, that's, there's, yeah.
Only social services, I would say, where they have a continual flow, but.
But everyone else is at full staff?
Plenty of, yeah. If, if they're not full, they're interviewing, you know.
Planning, I think we have one, they're still in.
Given that, I know we had some emails going back and forth about building inspectors and trying to make sure that we meet the requests, so you're saying that.
That position, if you recall, I asked the board if y'all had any concern about it, and I didn't hear anything, so I put an additional position in the current budget. So we have been trying to hire for a replacement as well as hiring an additional inspector that will help with also succession planning, and we have, we're still in that process. So that's why the, otherwise, they would be on this list, but we've already put the position on the books.
So as a follow-up to Mr. Crisco's question, any of the vacancy savings, how many of the positions have been unable to be filled the last few years or last year? That's.
I don't know that we've had, the last one that lasted a long time was the engineering position, and the others are just turnover. We had several turnover in planning and zoning, and then we go back and we rehire. We, same thing with the building inspector. We had a person, the person left, we're back out advertising. So there, there is a, and we have in the budget a proposal to increase, to help offset the budget by an additional $200,000 over what we have in this year's budget with vacancy savings, because we do know that we face those turnovers, and one of the ways to our, to help stretch our budget is to count on that and, like, that we're not going to pay the full salaries.
But it's also not just the turnover, it's the time difference from when someone steps down to when you hire. So you may be hiring at a lesser rate, but there's that timeframe from the time that person retires or steps down to when you hire, but then you're also dealing with, you know, trying to replace someone that may be a person you want, maybe, but may be requiring a higher salary just because we want to get them, correct?
We, we face all the different situations. I think systematically, we have changed a few things to try and expedite our hiring. Sometimes things would get, people are waiting, a department head's waiting to check, or somebody's doing references. We are quickly on it because we want to grab that person before somebody else does, so the offers go out very quickly. Sometimes we hire people, and then they decide they want to go somewhere else instead, and you wonder if you were in a competition for fun or, you know, to help them get a raise. All those things happen.
But I would say very few people that we hire are, we're hiring at a lower rate than what they left.
Only times where we've had somebody who's long-tenured.
But that's, yeah.
Yes.
But still, for the most part, if it's somebody that's there, they're going to, you're going to pay more to get them in today's markets.
Or at least as much. Anything else? All right, then, jumping on to the next topic of capital projects. I wanted to make sure the board, again, was very familiar with the projects that are listed in the Pago, and Ms. Callaway's going to address the debt finance, but the software, we've talked about that a lot. The E911 UPS battery system, that is running our E911 system. I mean, it's, it's a must that that battery, when its lifetime is up, that we replace it, and so that it can hold on until the generator kicks in, is what it does. The paving program, you may recall, that's a, that's a reduced budget from what they requested. The others, the elevator replacement, that is for building one. The roof replacement is for one portion of the new courthouse. The network overhaul replacement, that is looking at our fiber lines and, and things throughout our own campus system. The ADA improvements, continuing to try to provide those in our parks. The Beaver Dam dock bulkhead bridge replacement is a combined thing, and if, if you look back at the pictures on the submissions, we have a pretty bad erosion problem at Beaver Dam where the shoreline is just going away instead of putting a living shoreline. We have one part of our trail that's completely closed because the bridge was basically condemned. because the bridge was basically condemned. And then the school bus replacement, I'll mention that again when I get to the schools' budget. We build in now an inflation contingency as for all of the budgets. So that helps us if one comes in over or a little bit that we can have that allowance without having to come back to the board. The generator, the Gloucester Point Beach and the Historic Preservation, I've talked about those before, and those are all separately funded. Other than Gloucester Point Beach has a small amount in there that, it's a 95% grant.
Nice question on that.
Yes.
So all these, all of these capital Pago projects are in your budget?
Yes, these are all in the budget.
If we recall, the citizens resoundingly voted against any improvements at the Gloucester Point Beach. So I think we should take that out.
So, and you may recall that it's.
Because the citizens did not want it. They voted against it.
Mr. Bizani, you may recall, this is a shoreline improvement. This is not recreational. And if we do not keep up with our shoreline, we will be eroding the beach further and further.
Didn't you say that before when we were doing the referendum?
No, sir.
Shoreline improvements?
That was part of it. That was a thirteen million dollar project. Three million of it, which was shoreline, and ten million was recreational-type facility improvements.
What, what is the amount? Because the total is 2.5.
Right.
We'd be 5% of that, correct?
Yeah, it's a hundred. I, I mentioned it last time, I grabbed it in a second. I think it's a hundred and forty thousand, something like that. And it's obviously, and it is in the budget, but it is not, doesn't, we don't do the, you know, spend the money unless to get the grant. But it is in the budget.
It is in the budget, but you won't spend it if you don't get the grant.
Right, it's all, it's all grant-based.
And, and Mr. Bizani, the, the bond referendum failed for many reasons, so I, I have to take.
Failed, failed because you included all those projects in there.
Well.
They didn't want a tax increase. And if that's what we're doing to the citizens now, we're proposing a four cent tax increase. And if the public sees this, they're going to misunderstand what we're doing here.
But it's our job to tell them what's going on because I think Ms. Steele said, if you look at that beach, you know, VIMS and all the people up from that have done what they could to preserve their beaches. We're at the end of the line, and if we don't do anything, the only beach that people have access to is that public beach, and it's used very heavily. So I think, you know, for the citizens that use that and for the pier that a lot of people use, you know, we've got to do something. And again, is, it's all grant-based.
And the amount that the county would contribute is a hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. I am very much hoping that we get the grant. This is our third time of applying.
I'm sorry, what was that number?
Hundred and forty-three.
Two fifty.
Two fifty.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Steele?
Yes.
What does the one point, how many buses does the 1.3 million dollars get us?
That's the other question I have.
I, I will tell you that just a minute, but I will, I'll give you a little hint of what's coming up.
Six.
Six, thank you. Thank you. And I do have a recommendation that the schools address their fleet needs that they raised. I'll, I'll talk about that, that, that they could use those funds to help meet that need.
Correct.
Exactly.
So have the schools, you know, ridership, again, you know, you go to the high school and you watch the school buses go out at the high school, and they're probably anywhere from less than 50% full. Have they done a study to show that they really need that many buses, especially if you have ridership that's 50% or lower? Why would we need a, a bus, complete bus to do that?
So they're required to have enough buses, well, to provide transportation to all of the students. I think we all know that many families pick up students and deliver students. But as part of the state system, they have to have the buses. They also have, and, and Ms. Decker could come in, and I'm sure she would be happy to share information about the program that she has that looks at where all the kids are. It's, it's gotten so much more sophisticated where the families are able to watch the buses online and know who's coming. And they, they do have, keep counts on all those things.
So, Councilor Wilmot, is it true that the state does not require school buses to be purchased?
I don't know if I can find out. I will find out.
I'm not, I'm not saying I'm not supporting this. I'm just saying, one, the price of school buses have almost doubled since last time we discussed a ninety thousand dollar school bus. And now you're saying it's two hundred thousand dollars for a school bus? I mean, cars haven't gone up that much in price, or, you know.
For a while.
Not, not fif, not a hundred percent.
But they were closer to 150 when we, when we put the money, when we originally put the money in years ago, that went away, they were a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And this was seven or eight years ago.
And they also have switched to the larger-size bus to try to be able to handle more kids. So I, yes.
Fewer buses.
Fewer buses.
They're like an eighty-eight passenger or some crazy number, bus passenger, much larger than what we used to purchase as well.
And it might be good to have that person come and talk to us so that we have a better understanding of that, that particular issue.
I got, I have, I have a question as well because I know in James City County, all the children that live within a one-mile radius of the school they attend, transportation is not provided.
There is a rule on that, and I think that would be good to get that straight from Ms. Decker. And I think it has to do whether you're on a highway and secondary streets, things like that. So I'd be happy to ask her to come and, and speak at one of the future work sessions.
There we go.
All right, well, we're going to switch over to debt financing, and I'm going to pass over to Ms. Callaway.
Alrighty, so we have two projects that, this year, that are proposed for debt financing. The first being the borrowing for school HVAC, and that would be to accomplish the full five-year plan of HVAC in singular debt financing over fifteen years. And secondly, being the borrowing for Gloucester Volunteer Fire and Rescue Station One. So I'm going to go through a few of those scenarios and some information on each of those. This scenario is hot off the press from Davenport. This is related to the school HVAC, which we have proposed would be funded using excess school sales tax revenue. We propose that based on my own analysis of the additional revenue that we have collected in the school sales tax fund. And Davenport confirmed that they are confident we will have enough to also finance this particular borrowing. The total amount is four million, nine hundred seventy thousand dollars, and it would be financed over fifteen years, which is actually five years shorter than the existing debt financing that we have on HVAC right now. And so, as you can see in this analysis, the school sales tax will sunset in 2041, which is the same year that we will have our last debt payment for this particular proposed borrowing. And then in the bottom, on the very bottom right, the nine point six million is what we are anticipated to have in remaining school sales tax reserves after all existing borrowing and this proposed borrowing are paid.
And you said it, I missed it. What was the total borrowing for the HVAC?
Four million, nine hundred seventy thousand. It's seven, seventy-one ninety-six is at the end, if you want an exact number. All right, so moving into the fire department.
One, one more on that. What, I'm trying to see it without asking a question. What is the debt service?
That would be four seventy-eight, eight forty. That's in column D.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So moving on to the fire department. So I am an accountant and not a historian, but I did have to dig a little bit to remind myself where we have come so we can, I can help to provide the information to you all for where we're going. So I'm going to start with some historical information on what we did back in 2023. So on June 6th, 2023, our financial advisors at Davenport provided this analysis and presented it at that meeting. That analysis was for essentially just what is our borrowing capacity at varying levels of no tax increase, a tax increase, or two cent tax increase? That was, it included one million dollars of cash funding from Gloucester Volunteer Fire and Rescue. That circled in red in the first circle. And then that would produce a borrowing capacity of six point eight million dollars in fiscal year '24. And that was based on no tax increase. So I went back and I listened to the entire meeting to make sure that I, I caught all of the discussion there. And staff and Davenport were sent from that meeting with the understanding that we need to be able to fund the fire department. Six point eight million is not enough. Can you provide us more information on when we would have the debt capacity to fund the fire department? So that's this next slide. On July 18th, we came back and provided this adjusted analysis once we had some additional information. So circled in that first circle are a couple of the new factors in this analysis. The first being that we, we appropriated five hundred thousand dollars in fund balance for a radio payment. So I don't want that to get, I don't want to get hung up on that because it's not part of the fire department. I just wanted to point it out because it was an addition here, but essentially it came in and it went to that first payment. And now we're making those radio payments. So then the second little blurb in that first red circle is four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. And that was related to the sale of Olivia's, which is one of the current fire department buildings. And that was something that, in those initial discussions back in June, we discussed the, the fire department was going to be turning over parcels to the county in exchange for building the fire department. And the sale of those entire parcels was somewhat uncertain. We couldn't rely on getting all of that revenue from selling that entire plot. But four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for the sale that was fairly imminent of that particular piece was something that we felt confident to put into the analysis. So that's that four twenty-five. And then, yeah, go ahead.
Quick question, from Mr. Wilmot again. The firehouse became the subject of the referendum in 2023. Remind me, and see if it's true or not, because the referendum failed, that precluded us from buy, you know, from borrowing low-interest loans, either from the feds or from the state. Is that true or not?
Prohibited us from issuing general obligation bonds, which is one method to finance the construction. It's not the only method. But yes, you cannot issue what's called general obligation bonds to finance major capital construction without a referendum that passes. So even though that financial mechanism to finance the construction of the new fire station is not available because the referendum failed, there are other mechanisms to finance it, which may involve a higher interest rate, but that would be dependent upon the particular mechanism utilized.
So what, what mechanism are we going to borrow?
The recommended mechanism per Davenport right now is a revenue lease financing, and that requires.
Can we finish historical first and then go into the future?
Sure. Sure. Okay, so moving back into this analysis. So the four twenty-five I just mentioned, that was additional cash that would go into this particular scenario to fund the debt service. And that would yield thirteen point five million dollars, plus a little bit if you look down at the 1.1, a little further down. So about fourteen and a half million dollars of debt capacity in fiscal year '25. So that was, that's something else that's important to note here that this was always, to get to that amount of debt capacity, we had to borrow in fiscal year '25. It was not available in fiscal year '24. So that's where we've been. So moving into what.
Well, can I get my question answered, though?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now we've done what we've been, let's answer my question, if we don't mind, please.
Yeah, so that, the proposed option would generally be a revenue lease bond, or financing. It would require us to get a bond rating if we go to the open market, and we would be issuing our own county bonds. The other option would be to go to a bank and get a bank loan. We've been advised from our financial advisors at Davenport, whom I'm going to ask if you would like to hear from them, that the bank will probably be the higher interest rate and also going, it's going to be a larger payment, more than likely, because they will not do a 25-year term. So banks will generally only do a 20-year term.
So, so really, the referendum is going to impact the cost of borrowing?
It takes away one mechanism of borrowing that we.
Well, the other mechanism is higher interest rate from the bank. So either, either way, the question, my answer to my question is yes, it's going to cost more to borrow money to build a firehouse.
Potentially, yes.
Question. Mr. Wilmot, could we have done a general obligation without the referendum?
Yeah.
Ms. Callaway, do we have any idea what the thirteen point five, four, three million in FY '25 borrowing would have been as an annual debt service payment?
Yes, it was approximately seven hundred. It was about seven hundred seventy thousand dollars. I will give you the exact number.
Was that the numbers then, or is that the numbers today?
That was the numbers then. But I'll follow up with the exact debt payment. I, it looks like I pulled it out of here.
And if I can follow up one more time on the referendum, because we did a referendum and we included the firehouse in the referendum. I'm concerned about the optics that the public will see is that, look, we, we put the firehouse in the referendum. The public said, no, we don't want to fund the firehouse with tax increases. And so now we're going to say, well, we're going to fund the firehouse, and it's going to potentially cost us more in terms of borrowing costs. I'm just concerned about how the public's going to perceive this. They voted no on this, and now they're, now we're telling them, well, we're putting the firehouse up anyway, and it's going to cost you more to do it. That's the concern I have right now.
Yeah, Mr. Wilmot, regarding that previous question on the bond and everything, was there a timeframe in that, in that aspect that we couldn't go back and do this again?
There is a timeframe that you cannot do a new referendum, but I'm not, don't recall it off the top of my head. It was, it might have been one year, it might have been five, but I'll, I'll find out.
It, I believe it was two years. And on funding.
They told us five.
That's what I heard, five.
They, they told us five here, and then they went back, and we reported this at a previous meeting that they went back and asked just to see, and this is the case of VRA, who we would normally borrow from, would they consider it? And they reaffirmed, no, they would not.
Until 2027.
Right, two years, sorry.
If you were to do another referendum, my recommendation is that you don't marry it, marry it to another project. That it's just one project.
One project.
And that way it's up. Because as you may recall, the referendum involved both the schools, I mean, both the fire department and Parks and Rec, and I think there was a third element. So if someone were to vote no or yes, they may have picked one or the other. And also, there was information to the effect that the county could afford to build a new fire station without borrowing money, which is true if you cut everything else. So they may have voted no because they were led to believe by some that it would not be necessary for the county to raise taxes and borrow money to build the fire department, which in reality is not true.
Mr. Crisco, that payment was seven hundred seventy thousand, two hundred forty-one dollars. You're welcome. All right, moving on, so what has changed? I get, went through the history, what, where are we now? So this chart provides the Davenport analysis that was presented on July 18th of 2023 in the first column. The second column is where we are right now, and then the change. So originally, we had estimated this project to be twelve million, one hundred thousand dol, one hundred thousand dollars. And it is today at seventeen million, three eighty-nine, seven ninety-six, or an increase of about five point three million dollars in project costs. The contribution from the fire department is, they've, will be nine hundred sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars, which is a decrease of four hundred fifty-six thou, thousand dollars from the, the original of one million in cash and the sale of Olivia's at four twenty-five.
And why did they change their mind?
I am not aware of why. I understand that they will be selling the building prior to transferring the parcels to the county.
So they're, they're, they're putting less funding in the game then? They wanted, they were going to put us, put in 1.4, now they're going to just save nine hundred sixty-eight. No reasons why.
If, can, Mr. Chair, I would like to point out that the state laws changed on how the pharmaceuticals have to be handled. And they have faced a, quite a steep increase in the capital work that they had to do to have the secured area. And they took on this project on their own and did not come back to the county asking for funds.
So the differential is the cost, additional cost of pharmaceuticals? I get it, thank you. I get it, thank you.
Yeah, the handling and storage of them has changed drastically for them. They can't, they, they were able to get some from the hospitals when they, when, when they brought a patient in, they could get resupplied there and now it doesn't happen like that anymore.
Yeah, there were stories all over the news about this and how it's impacting all fire and rescue squads throughout the whole region.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Frisani, if you were to visit the firehouse today, when you walk in the building, there's a secure room that I think Mr. Crisco has visited. There's a secure room that unless you are a ALS provider, you cannot get in that room. And as of the other day when I asked, there is only a handful of things that the hospital will supply. It's up to Gloucester Volunteer Fire and Rescue as well as Edmonton to supply, to have their drugs on hand, have their drug box stocked and ready to go. And it's also their responsibility to discard those drugs, which also come with a cost.
Well, I, I appreciate the differential, thank you. It explains it.
You're talking about advanced life support people. How many are those do we have in Gloucester Fire and Rescue?
I couldn't give you a number. I couldn't give you an accurate number either.
All right, moving on to, so still in that top section of the chart, so the increased project costs, the fire department contribution at 968. And then the last one is a little bit of a bigger discussion, I'm happy to answer questions on it. But that original Davenport analysis, actually all of them, that provided the, you can do this with zero, you can fund this debt with zero tax increase, that, that was all based on creating a debt service reserve. And what that means is that, that 4.365 million dollars would be transferred from the general fund every single year into the debt service fund regardless of if that's the actual amount of the payments or not. So then it would generate, it would create a reserve for years where we may be paying off one, one debt and we're, we're able to then fund a, a new debt with a little bit of that reserve. So in fiscal year 25, we, instead of charging and increasing the general fund by keeping that 269, we decreased the amount of the debt service transfer out of the general fund to exactly what we needed to make our debt payments. So we did not create or start a debt service reserve in fiscal year 25, which was also part of that scenario. So all of those things combined in that section down in the bottom, cost increases of 5.3, lower revenues by 725, it increases the borrowing around 6 million dollars and provided this an estimated payment increase of about 471,000 per year. And then the last piece I wanted to mention is that the scenario, talking about no tax increase, was only talking about relative that, to that specific project and not analyzing the inflationary pressures that may be occurring on the operations of the county. So this was only looking at the capital plan for these projects.
Ms. Callaway, has Davenport had the opportunity to give us an idea of what our borrowing capacity is today?
So they are working currently, not on just total borrowing capacity, but they are working on updating scenarios specifically for the fire department borrowing. And they provide, so, but no, I do not have just an open, ask them, I have not asked them what our borrowing capacity is currently.
And I think it needs to be total borrowing capacity.
Okay.
So in the event other events happen that we need to borrow money, can't be, we need a fire department, but it, or a station, but it can't be dependent on just that.
Yeah, and I think, I'll let Ms. Steele add in if she wants, but I, I think what we will find with the fire department is that it's unlikely that they're going to provide an analysis that says with no tax increase, you can fund this plus some more. So it depends on if you're looking for borrowing capacity at certain rates of additional revenue or if you're looking at where we are today.
I would, I would like to know where we are today with no tax increase, where the borrowing capacity is.
Will we see that before budget adoption?
We need to have a Davenport here.
And I, I was going to mention too, the difference between the geo-bonds and again the, the lease rental. And so we have the option, and we discussed it with Davenport, of using current facilities that we have as collateral or instead putting a mortgage on the new building. And for the reason that you said that, that Mr. Hudson, that you don't want to give away your ability to borrow in the future when there may be other things, it was advised that we put a mortgage on the new building because we would have to be almost putting the whole campus together to have enough collateral for a, a different loan and we need to save those in case there is future borrowing.
Question regarding the top line, so in 71823, the estimated cost was 12 million 100,000 and then now at 17 plus all that, how do they come out with that exact number? I mean, they haven't finished the plans, correct? And they don't know how, I mean, how do they come up with it exactly like $96?
That, that number was provided from their architect, I believe, and so that was a pretty detailed estimate.
And then it has our contingency on it, right? Or we added in?
It was, they had a contingency included in their architect's.
No, they would put it, they would, they would put it out for bid, correct? Just like we would normally do? And we don't know how that bid would come in at present, correct? So this is the architect coming up with the number, they put it out for bid, correct? They wouldn't do a sole source.
It depends on if it, if it's going through the county procurement process or not. No, if it were going through the county's procurement process, it is not going to be a sole source.
See, the problem with state procurement law is that you've opened your kimona. You've told them 17 million, these contractors will come in at 17 million. I mean, that's just the way it's going to be.
Who's going to be in charge of the contracting part of it? Do we know yet?
You tipped your hat, basically.
I think that may be something that we're looking for some guidance on, based on whether the fire department will lead that procurement process or whether that will be something that will go through the county.
Again, you know, with the procurement system, the way it works in the state, I think Mr. Wilmot and I have discussed this before, is once you put out a number out there, that's where the contractors are going to come in. They're not going to do a penny lower than that because you've advertised what you're willing to spend as opposed to a, you know, firm fixed secret ballot bid. You take in those bids and hope for the best.
Just as an example though, the high school came in underbid. So there are occasions.
There are occasions when that happens, but again, you know, you're, you're tipping your hat. Well, we just revealed, we just knew a 17, a 6 million dollar bogey now that we've got to contend with, that no one knew about it until tonight, right?
A balance between transparency and.
Right, we have to know what you need to be able to tell you all what we need to borrow.
Right, right.
I'm just saying.
And, and I also want to mention that for, to help the public understand the increase, it's not just the inflation from the time of the bond or referendum. The fire department was working on this project individually years before we combined. So when they first got their drawings done and they had that lower price, I, I don't, I think we just did a slight adjustment and we did like a, a 10%, I think is what we did.
Yes.
And when we were coming to you all for the bond referendum and then the, in that time period, the Williamsburg Fire Department was built and went way over what they had estimated because of, again, construction expenses. So it's really, it's a couple years old price, but in a way it's even older than that. And the architect gives the best that they can give and sometimes they're under and sometimes they're over, but you know, they do, that's part of their requirement is to give what they think it'll cost to build it.
So, so despite everything we've said tonight, I'm still supporting this project for the fire department. So I am still supporting it even though, you know, the public may sound like I'm against it, I am not. I'm just talking about the financial aspects of this, it's costing us more, but we do need another fire department and I will support that.
I think we all supported it and I think having the financial information as present and maybe having Davenport back here to go through the numbers and answer the question that Mr. Hudson had in terms of our total borrowing capacity, because if I recall from the presentations that they made, we were well below our borrowing capacity and had the capacity to really borrow more than what was there from that initial estimate. But I think having them back now that we're at the top of that portion of where we have to make the decision, having them here would be very helpful.
Yeah, and I, so one follow-up question, well, I have this at the end to ask about timing for Davenport, but I also want to clarify the difference between capacity and capacity without a tax increase. So we have, the county is not in any shape or form up against a wall as far as what we can borrow. It's what the appetite is for paying that debt back with, with revenues that we may or may not have. So, so I just wanted to make that clear that it, we are not maxed out in any shape or form of our debt capacity. It's at what rate do we want to generate revenue to pay that additional debt?
And just one last question regarding borrowing, this has nothing to do with what we'll be dealing with, with utilities, correct?
Correct.
These are two separate issues in terms of borrowing.
Completely separate.
Mr. Koshyer, then Mr. Gibson?
Just, just to put this out here, being transparent, before I was a member of this group, I was set one of the board of directors of Gloucester Volunteer Fire and Rescue and I've not ever hid that. But I've watched this price increase and what you have to take into consideration is that the architects and nor the board of directors of Gloucester Volunteer Fire and Rescue are, are driving the price up. The longer, it's like everything else, the longer the project sits, the more the building materials go up, the more the NFPA changes, the more things change. And so it started out where it was. Today, today it is where it is. That is a legitimate, I saw the paperwork, that, that's a legitimate. And my concern is, it always will be, it's like everything else. I support it like, like Mr. Frisani and I'm going to, to support it. But the longer we sit on it, the higher the price is going to go. Just wanted to put that out there.
Let me see that. Mr. Gibson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the presentation and I appreciate the history. I, I certainly support the fire station, but I have regularly been asked, why isn't construction already started for the fire station? And I said, well, we, we have not authorized that yet and there's not funding available yet, but they say, but during the referendum, there was concerted messaging, we have the money to build the fire station right now. Vote against referendum. And correct me if I'm wrong, but at the time of the referendum in 2023, there was less than 3 million dollars available in funding to fund the fire station without a tax increase, without borrowing. Is that correct?
I don't know that I have the numbers for 2023, but I know that we did not have borrowing capacity to, well, to funding cash, certainly did not have.
The cash.
Correct.
The implication was, we have the cash, we have the cash, we can build it now, this is totally unnecessary. That was the message over and over, we have the cash. And so I'm asked, well, if you have the cash, why isn't the station built? But I remember those numbers and I remember you telling the public and I remember Ms. Steele telling the public, but the reality was with a 12 million dollar fire station during that timeframe, we were 9 million dollars short, 9 million dollars short. And, and so I think that, I, I just wanted to clear the air so that people would understand that we didn't have the cash, that was told to the repub, public repeatedly that we didn't have the cash. And now that we're in 2025, we have a project that at one time was 12 million dollars, is now 5.3 million dollars more. And, and that's, that's very discouraging and that's a huge financial burden for the county. So I just wanted to, to clear the air and, and, and just make sure that the public understood that we did not have the cash at the time to fund the station and that is why we are having this discussion now.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
On your slide here, you have an increase in estimated payment of 471,348. Increase estimated payment from what level?
From the 770 that I provided and I have one more, I have two more slides that show the new payments that I'm estimating. So the 770 is what the original Davenport estimates were back in 2023. This slide is from the proposed budget presentation and the proposed new debt service would be 1.2 million, 1.241 million. I do want to disclaim, these charts are, are my calculations and my numbers and they've been guided by Davenport, but that is why we're waiting on Davenport to provide their firm estimates so that we make sure that they're going to loop in any sort of borrowing costs, et cetera. But 1.241589 is the expected payment moving forward and these are two, I have two slides that are suggestions or options, but obviously there are a plethora of options that you, and ways that you could borrow, which Davenport would be the expert to explain those details. But I'll explain what we presented in the proposed budget presentation and this option would borrow, the, the fire department, project and borrowing are included in the fiscal year 26 budget right now. But that payment would not, the full payment would be due in fiscal year 27. So what this suggestion would be is that you would, the fire department would provide the funding in fiscal year 26 or fiscal year 27, that amount of cash they have said they will provide. And then it would require a half of a penny based on today's penny value in both fiscal year 27 and fiscal year 28. So that would be 284,000 of additional revenue generated in 27 and then an addition, and then an additional 284 to make 568,845 in fiscal year 28 and beyond to fund that payment.
So when will the project be shovel-ready?
Do you have those details? I don't know that I have those details.
It's up to us.
How we're going to fund it?
The last scenario, and I think this is my, the last slide, oh, I have one more just follow-up slide.
Ms. Callaway, and this might not be for you, I think might be for Mr. Baines. If this, funding was decided tonight or at April 1st, when would it be shovel-ready?
We have met with the, the Volunteer Fire and Rescue Building Committee and their project manager and right now probably the, the key to getting this done is getting a site plan in and they don't have it ready yet. But once you turn a site plan in, we have 30 days to review it, you send it back to the engineer who then updates it, comes back to us for another 30 days, we correct whatever else is there. Most site plans go through at least two cycles and that's 60 days each, so right there's 120 days and if they don't get it right, it comes back for a third. So I'm guessing 120 to 180 days it'd be ready. And that's, that's based on their engineer having to get those things done.
With that site plan finalized, does that site plan, it doesn't include the schematics and all the, the stuff for the, the bid, correct?
It does not, you're right. But, but we're expecting, because it would take that long, that then anything they have to do with the building itself could be corrected. It was, it was designed to the 2018 building code and they have to update it to the 2021 building codes, they've got some things they've got to do there. And then deciding on who actually funds the building, there's some additional things we could be doing to the building, solar on top of it or other stuff if we do. But right now, I'd say 120 to 180 days if you said yes tonight.
So aside from the site plan reviews, does the architect have a scope of work ready to go to contract?
They had done the drawing, I guess at 80% when we talked to them, I can't quite remember the number, it was about 80%, but it was at those old codes. So a lot of that's just changing things on your, your pages that reference the newer code for the way you do the wiring or anything else with it. But we haven't heard back. I think we're going to meet with them again sometime this week to walk the site, but we don't know what the architect's response is on how quickly he can get to it. It's a large firm that does fire stations, so I don't know how quickly they'll get to the one here in Gloucester.
I keep on hearing a word called, or have heard, design-build, which is my understanding in a way to do things a little bit less expensive.
I won't say less expensive, but what it does for you is you get started sooner because the person who bids it gets to start like on the site work while they're still designing it. They aren't able to do this because they've already got plans for it. So you can't do a design-build because they've already got the plans sitting on the shelf. So we've got to do it the way where you design it, bid it and then construct it.
Yeah, we, we wrote millions of dollars with the claims for design-build, design as you build and that costs us a lot of money. So it's good to have the scope of work ahead of you, ahead of, ahead of time.
Yep.
Bid the job and start working.
Yep.
Bid the job and start working.
Yep.
If you design-as-you-build, you don't know if you need the extra windows, or an extra wall, oh, oh, we need an extra this and that and the other, and it's, it just gets expensive.
And, and again, mine was this, in, in discussing it with their committee. I'm sure someone on their committee would have a better timeline in talking to their architect, as we haven't. But that was, the meeting we had a couple weeks ago, that was their timeline, was getting the site plan in, and we, we met. So shovel-ready, six months in September. They would, yeah, they would love to have it in the ground before Christmas, but I don't know if you're gonna be there or not.
Start it by the fall, it will be...
Best-case scenario, that's, that was extremely generous if they could get, if, if we approved it tonight, getting it started by October 1 would be amazing.
It, it would be every, uh, the stars aligned, and everything worked, and the bids went out, and, yeah, yeah. No hurricanes. Right, no hurricanes and storms, yeah.
I wanted to quickly clarify on the design-build, that we would have to pass a new, an ordinance for that. And I, Ms. Joyce in my office is working on, working on gathering some information to provide to Mr. Wilmot to move, to consider that. But, uh, she also did reach out to procurement, uh, staff in at least five other localities who have recently built fire departments, and only one of them used the design-build. Everybody else did design, bid, build.
Have a question.
Okay, so the very last scenario, um, as I just presented in the previous slide, it would be borrow everything, start the payments in 27, half a penny in 27 and 28. This particular scenario, uh, would push out and do interest-only for a year, in which case, the expectation would be that the cash provided by the fire department would cover the first interest payment. And if that were the case, it, uh, it would postpone a tax increase, uh, for this project until 2028.
So, with the borrowing and the interest rates that we would pay, we would obviously look for opportunities to refinance if interest rates come down?
Yes, our financial advisors keep us aware of any potential financing, refinancing opportunities. And, uh, let's see. It, oh, and just to mention that this particular scenario, if you were to do interest-only, just like if you do buy a new car, it's six months no payments, you're gonna have some more additional interest. It's gonna be a higher, you're gonna pay more interest over the life of the loan. Um, so, in wrapping this little section up, where it's not, there we go.
Well, she's saying that, we just said, one of the other reasons that we put that out there, besides the fact that there was a sizable tax increase proposed, uh, for your consideration this year, was to avoid having back-to-back tax increases, and knowing that next year is reassessment. So it would, you do pay 270 more, and it may not be anything that the board is interested in, but just wanted you to have that option to consider.
So, Ms. Callaway, our next budget work session is actually April 21st. That's a whole, long way.
It is.
If we wanted to have Davenport in order to make a decision regarding that. And then, less than, um, nine days later, April 30th, we have to adopt the budget. Just wanna put that.
What's the latest, 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 Mr. Wilmot?
Under state law, you have until your first regular meeting in June to approve your budget. And that's always my answer, because it's always correct. Um, however, having said that, the schools logistically need to have their portion of the budget approved by mid-May, among other reasons, so they can get their, their teacher contracts out. So we've always worked with, really, let's, let's do it by early, mid-May at the latest.
Okay.
We could, we can ask Davenport to potentially come to a non, to a regular board meeting. We don't, we don't have to wait for the work session. We'll see what their schedule's like.
Yeah, I think that might be worthwhile, given the timeframe that we've been just discussing. So, let's see if we can get them here for a regular budgets, or regular work session.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
You all need to decide, or should decide, several things. One is, uh, whether to borrow the money, and what mechanism to utilize to borrow the money. And Davenport can certainly, um, steer that decision, uh, and give you the necessary information. But before, or at the same time as you decide as, uh, whether to borrow the money, and how much money to borrow, and what mechanism to utilize to borrow the money, it's to build the fire station. Well, then, there are other things that need to be decided is, who's going to design the fire station? Who's gonna put it out to bid? Who's going to own it? Whether there's gonna be lease involved? So, among other things, um, I, that really should be decided, because if you're gonna decide to borrow $14 million to build a fire station, this is on land they own. So, we need to come to an agreement, the fire station and the county, as to all of the details, because the devil's in the details. Um, if we go out to bid on something, and we, we, we're, we're constrained to accept the lowest responsible bid by the, lowest responsive bid by the lowest responsible bidder, that might not be something that fits their palate, you know? It might be something that they don't want, and it's their land. So, I think it's important that at the same time, or before you decide how much to borrow and the mechanism utilized to borrow it, it's, is, will there be a land or building exchange from the fire department, which owns a lot of property, um, to the county? Will the fire department be owning it? Will the fire department be leasing it? If they're gonna be leasing it, how much rent are they gonna be paying for the county? Over what period of time? Uh, if they're going to lease it at the end of that lease term, or 20 years of their financing, do you then turn it over to the fire department? So, there's so many, um, iterations of agreements that you can come to. But to just agree, decide to borrow $14 million to build a fire station, isn't, isn't good enough. You really need to know the details.
So, so the key question there, and that's a good point that you just made, is, if, let's say we, we start to build the, the facility, and the fire department says, ah, you know, I don't like the way this thing looks, and so therefore, we want it done this way. Who has, who has privety of contract to say, no, we're building it the way we scoped it?
Those are the, those are details that need to be ironed out before the project commences.
So, Mr. Wilmot, could you, would it be worthwhile to put all those concerns in a specific memo to us so that we understand what lies ahead before we approve? You just listed probably half a dozen things that we should be concerned about. I know they've appeared, I think, in some of the emails that we've seen, but I, I mean, you just threw out six really important factors that need to be considered, that I would think we would want that information.
One of the key things you'd wanna have is, we've got the design, no changes. You can't come back and say, we want extra this and extra that.
Well, and my understanding is that they've done the design, they've hired the architect. The beauty there is that architect, hiring architects is generally exempt from your required procurement procedures, which is a good thing, given where we are in the process. But, um, I don't know whether the county's gonna wanna buy in, uh, or, or a seat at the table with reference to design, or not, or whether it's carte blanche fire department. So, I don't know, but yes, Dr. Orth, I'd be happy to craft a memo with my thoughts, um,
Maybe get, like into, um, Ms. Callaway and Ms. Steele in terms of the types of questions that have probably been discussed, uh, during previous, um, meetings with the fire department. I think we will all feel comfortable if, given the questions that you raised, as our competent lawyer and understanding all the nuances, uh, that if not done correctly, they obviously come back to bite us in you-know-where, and so...
We, we wanna avoid any disagreements, we wanna make this as smooth as possible, and the best way to do that is to decide everything upfront.
Would it be possible to transfer title to the property to the county? So that you avoid, you avoid that conflict?
Well, I, I think it was initially envisioned, at least from where I'm sitting, that the county would own it. But...
Not, not the land?
Not the land, but the building, yes.
Would they be, is there possibility that you can ask them to transfer title to the county of the land? So therefore, we got full control of the building and the land?
We, we could, or...
So here's, if, if we're gonna have these decisions made, we're going to need to have the fire department at the table. Us sitting here talking about this tonight is not gonna help. So until we get the fire department in the room with us, um, that's when those decisions need to be made.
No, I, I totally agree, I'm just saying that those are the questions that need to be on the table, that, and having them here to help us walk through this would be valuable.
I, I believe some of those questions, informally, have been answered when they were before us, when we passed the resolution, um, in support of building the firehouse on Main Street, uh, back last June, July.
Right.
Informally.
Right.
Would, would the board like for us to ask the fire department to, to come to the April work session?
Absolutely.
I mean, is that a timeframe?
I would think it's a separate meeting just with them, and no other agenda items on there, so that we can hammer this out.
The, the bigger issue to start with is how we're going to fund it. If we are unable to fund it, then the rest of these questions go away.
Certainly, that's perhaps the first decision to make, is, are you willing to borrow the money? And which mechanism? You could start down that path, understanding that you don't actually approve the borrowing or the issuance of the bonds until a later date. By that time, you really should have all those details worked out.
Mr. Koshyer?
I think the first step to the, to the process, from, from my vantage point, is the, is the, uh, security of the fire department's end, that the money's there. Then I don't think you're gonna have any trouble getting anybody to the table to iron out all of that stuff. But the security of knowing the money is there, that's, that's key.
I agree with you that we need to have, make sure the money's there, but we need to work with everything else in conjunction, answer those questions, so it'll be done in a timely fashion, and make sure it's there. And also, as a board, we need to figure out, right now, it's at $17 million. At what level is the board comfortable going over that amount, if the bids come in higher? So, that's, they're major questions, but I think they need to be worked in conjunction with one another. I think everybody here is supporting the fire station being built. So I think they need to start working hand-in-hand, because if we wait to get the Davenport presentation, and then figure out what we can spend, and then Mr. Wilmot starts working to get the MOU, or whichever device worked out, that's throwing that into May to June, possibly July. So that's pushing everything back further. That's why it needs to work hand-in-hand, in conjunction with one another.
So, I will, if it's all right with the board, then I'll make sure I work with Mr. Wilmot, and, um, if there's any other questions and things that he can get to you all in a memo, so that when we do have a meeting, you have those as background. And then if you'd like, um, we'll, we'll confirm with you when we have Davenport coming, and if they're available for the April 1st meeting, hopefully. It's not much turnaround, but hopefully they can. And then, um, if, and we'll find that out tomorrow before the, um, agenda setting. And then if, uh, we could see if the fire department representatives could come to the work session. I think what you're just saying, Mr. Hudson, and whether if you wanna do it some other way, that's fine, but I think you're exactly right, is having those things, that the site plan process not be held up because of the, these decisions haven't been made.
I, I agree with Mr. Fazani, I think it, we need to have Davenport soon as we can. But I think that we need to have Ms. Cronin or someone send out a doodle poll with the fire department and with us to see when we could schedule another appointment. And I know that, um, when we set the, uh, schedule, we said, not next week, but the following week was out because of spring break. But, we need to just figure out what's best, even if it's the Monday or Tuesday or whatever after spring break.
You going to Fort Platte, Dan?
I'm not going anywhere. I don't have kids in school anymore, so it doesn't matter when spring break is.
So when Mr. Wilmot develops those questions, Mr. Crisco did mention that some of the questions that were raised have been discussed informally. Would it be possible to have something said that, here are some things that have already been talked about, so we know that in order to move the discussion further along, we'll already know that some of these areas have been discussed? I mean, it's, it's obvious that, I mean, uh, Ms. Crisco, you were involved in a lot of these discussions with the fire department, along with Ms. Steele and Mr. Wilmot. So it might be, I mean, just for the board's purpose. I, I know at the last building meeting that we met with, Kim Beetley and I met with them to discuss their timeline, and that's where we came up with this thing with the site plan. They had ideas of the same thing Mr. Wilmot's talking about, that we need to set up some type of conditions, contract, something along those lines. I know they're talking about it just as much as y'all are. So I think, if you want, one of us can reach back out to them and say, hey, what do you have as far as on your list? So we make sure it matches everything Mr. Wilmot wants or more. If that's all right with y'all, you just let me know, Carol can let me know later on. The other thing, just to remind y'all, April 1st is when we're supposed to be setting the utility rates and about funding for the utilities. So, that night may have some other things on the agenda besides the fire station.
We were talking about the work session, in April.
All right, well, good, I was just, April 1st, Katie and I got things we gotta do with the utilities, we wanna make sure that's still moving too.
Plenty of room between April 1st or 2nd and the 21st. So if we can get the fire department in with us and have just a sole work session just with them to hammer out the details, that would be great.
Are you ready to move on?
Okay, so, the next topic is the school board's budget. The, we had the joint session, and you heard a request of $2,378,400 more than the proposed level funding. And it was a little bit confusing with some of the slides, and, uh, I met with the superintendent, was very glad that everything all aligned and matched up, and it was because of the fact that, um, the school board did not support the grant writer. And that wasn't shown being taken out on their slides, but it was taken out. So, the, um, $410,844 was general sort of budget support that they needed from locals, what they asked for. And then you see the additional breakdowns that were, the things that were italicized, um, in their request.
Ms. Care, Ms. Steele, why did they not want a, a grant writer?
The school board, um, I think was trying to, um, reduce expenses, and whether they were gonna get the bang for the buck, um, on that. We do have a, a grant writer at the, a shared grant writer at the Planning District Commission, and that person has already attempted to help one school grant, which was for HVAC. So she is available to help on projects if something comes up. And then, a lot of their teachers, um, have the ability to do some smaller ones. I think they were thinking they could go after funds that they haven't been, had the opportunity to, but the school board, um, wasn't supporting at the time. Um, if you'll flip to the next. So, I, um, I'm, right or wrong, I'm standing by the, uh, level funding is my recommendation. And if the board says differently, then I'll put that in the revised budget, and we'll start working on it. Two things that I have suggestions and sort of initial recommendations of things that maybe, uh, don't hurt so much to the school system, but they also reduce that ask, is, um, using the, the bus money that we talked about for their fleet vehicles. I think looking at the pictures that they showed, knowing the age of their vehicles, they really do need to get some new cars, and that they could put that as a priority and get one less bus. Um, also, the food service support, they have, um, had the free lunches for everyone, not just those who qualify. And so my suggestion is that they would reinstate charges for the non-needs-based students. And that could eliminate the $450,000 that they were asking for in additional cafeteria support. As I have said to you, Ms. Callaway and I, that, that's the, probably the area we are most concerned about, is their cafeteria fund, because they've, uh, used their fund balance this year, and they really are hurting. And if they don't reinstate, um, charging for lunches, then something is gonna have to give in that department, or that enterprise count will not make it next year.
Means-tested school lunches.
Right, they've always had who qualified and who didn't, but after the pandemic and other things, it, it went to free for everyone.
Well, not the, not the first year, not the first year.
Okay, sorry.
It ran in increments.
Right, and it was different schools that qualified.
This amount the next year, and then...
That's correct, thank you.
Were they reimbursed for that? I thought they were reimbursed.
They're not reimbursed at full rate.
Not full rate, but they are getting some reimbursement.
They get a little, yes, for the non-qualifying. It's full for the qualifying.
Correct.
So, excuse me.
But that's okay. And, uh, just for public knowledge, what says student device replacement?
That's the Chromebooks and things.
I know what it is, but I just wanted for, you know, for public to know that those Chromebooks and that, you know, that is, technology is the thing of the day.
And and I I mean, no harm in this, but I think one of the things that we have to find the line for you all and your comfort level is we generally stay out of the very small details. But personally, knowing how we do a computer replacement program, we have that information. We can tell you right away how many computers have to be replaced next year. So I I don't know whether you all want any indication of how bad would it be for them to wait another year? Or is this, they've got to have it? So those are the kind of things, I think, if there's questions that you have about this additional, the additional ask or not, you know, if you're fine with it, but those were my initial comments and.
So five hundred thousand dollars for the Chromebooks, and we're talking about three hundred Chromebooks?
I don't know what the amount.
That's a lot of money, that's a lot of Chromebooks. Have they destroyed all of them or what? What's going on with all the Chromebooks?
Not necessarily.
They are, I believe they were the ones that were with the original pandemic and they've and their time is.
Funds, right, we got the Chromebooks to offer funding.
They now use them all, everybody's using them. But when they've done their time, and they use them for their SOL testing, they use it for everything. So they've got to have functional devices. And they may need every bit of that fund, but I, a bias of that came after as additional budget requests. So I've just kind of like, could they make it another year? I don't know.
Have, if we were to start reinstating charges for non-need-based students, I know you're saying that four hundred and fifty dol- four hundred and fifty thousand dollars wouldn't be needed. But how much extra would be generated? Do we have any idea on that?
Not without asking, no. I I'm sure they do, because they, but not without asking. I would hope it would cover. I also, Maria's gonna start up in just a moment on the follow-up items. And one that we forgot to include, and while I'm on the schools, is just to give you the breakdown, if y'all want to make a note of it. The request was, what was their step cost and what was their COLA? And the step is eight hundred thirty seven thousand six hundred and two. And the COLA is one point six million and change. What we don't have is how much of that one point six is covered by the state. So I I don't know that. We know that the one point one that's proposed in the General Assembly is to cover more positions that are currently not funded, but out of the part that the governor put in and it's their sort of normal of what the COLA would be. I don't have that figured. Three, it's one point six seven five two oh five, one million six hundred seventy five thousand two hundred and five. And the step is eight thirty eight thirty seven six oh two.
How much of the governor's budget will cover that?
I just want to say, we weren't provided that and we didn't ask that. We didn't think to ask. The one six, one six seven five two oh five is the three percent COLA. And the step is eight thirty seven six oh two.
Ms. Steele, on that, back to the food service support, these these are, is these base are for all stu- all students in all schools or just the high school?
This is all, we're talking about all the students who qualify versus those who don't.
Okay, and at all schools?
Yes. And the school board may be completely opposed to this. I mean, this is just something I'm looking at how, trying to keep the budget down in different ways. All right, the last thing we had for you tonight, and of course, however much discussion. Oh, yes, sir.
Real quick, and Mr. DeCocher, he may can add to this as well. You know, you say need base, you know, the high school, they were the first ones to get into, you know, no payment for lunches. But you would be surprised the children that are not eat, they don't eat because they don't have, you know, any money, they don't, they don't have it.
But they're the ones that can't afford it, so they need to get the free lunches.
They need to get the free lunches, but you'd be surprised how many it is.
We don't know that number yet.
I mean, I, I watch them.
I think it's it's just over forty percent qualify.
During the COVID season, when it was free and then they went, they had to pay. During the COVID season, you'd see kids, everybody, you know, rush to cafeteria and eat. And then you, time lunch, you have maybe five or six in your class, or ten that may go to eat. The rest of them won't eat.
There's no doubt that it's been a big help for families that it's been there.
They do have a wonderful program across the high school where they get food to go home. And a lot of kids, they just, they don't eat, that's the only meal they get.
But but I don't think in any way Ms. Steele is implying that.
Oh, I know she's not, I'm just making this up.
I think what she's saying.
I know what she's saying, I did, I know what she's saying, I'm just.
But for the citizens to follow up, if it's need-based, they will continue to get it.
Correct.
Right. So the.
Can I touch on Chromebooks for a second?
Sure.
Chromebooks is, school teacher bachelorette is what I do. And and what I have seen in my own classroom around the building is, we have, I have a lot of students who have had, who have their original Chromebook, okay? So i- if they're eleventh and twelfth grade, well, in 2020, they were in the eighth grade. So when they left page, they left their Chromebook. When they came to Gloucester High School, they picked their Chromebook up in ninth grade. That has been their textbook, their homework, their whatever. And I have a lot of students that still have their original Chromebook that they were issued the day they came to high school. What we, what they, what you have found is there are some that are pressed in. You wouldn't know, you, they still run real good. There are some that, there's nothing wrong with them, but the but the innards are starting to slow down. And so, or they have to keep them plugged in, because if they unplug them, the batteries, and they don't have, and because of the lateness of the gear and the budget crunch, they're not buying batteries to put batteries in the Chromebooks and stuff like that, so. So that is, I just throwing that out there, you are correct. There are, so you are right, there are some students whose Chromebooks look like they just came off the showroom floor. But they're not, they don't all look that way, or they don't all run that way because of age and usage and riding around in book bags and whatever.
Some look like they ran through a stampede.
No, most of my kids, most of my students and most of the students around the building, they have nice looking Chromebooks. They're not, they're, they're, a lot of them are thankful to have them, believe it or not. And so they do what they have to do to take care of them. But with everything else, they age, but you are correct, there are some that look like they just came out of the box. There's two kids that still carry their Chromebook in a box and have for four years. And they, I say, you carry that box every day? Yes, sir, that's how I keep the school division's computer good and safe, because my mama told me, if I tear it up, I gotta pay for it.
Right, so there, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Callaway to talk about some of the other follow-up items.
So this section is just information that is being provided in response to questions that we've had since the budget presentation. A couple of things that are not in here that I wanted to just mention. On Friday evening, I emailed out the proposed budget book, which is a very simple, small version of the book. It is departmentalized, it's it's broken out by departments, it's got all the line items in a couple of different ways. We have found a few little formatting stafus and things like that and that we'll be working on and looking at over the next week or so. And we may provide a revised version, but the numbers that we have are good. It's just maybe the formatting there. And there's an Excel version also that I emailed out of that budget. And then I also wanted to mention that in the upcoming work session, we will provide any carryovers that may be needed. As we've done in the past, we generally do that in a revised proposal.
Sidebar, sidebar.
Sidebar.
Sidebar. Might be more follow-up. Yeah.
Sorry, overruled. Okay, keep going, sorry.
That's all right. No, that is not it, we are still going, okay. Oh, you were asking if that's. No, this is not it, but it can be. All right, I'll just start explaining a little, you want me to wait? Okay, um, no, if it's something I need to look at.
Not yet.
Um, all right, so this is, first, we were asked to provide the history of amounts that had been paid to Gloucester Matthews Humane Society. So I did it in a chart first. So this chart looks a little crazy. There is all of the data on the next page, but I'll, so I'll just touch on some of those highs and lows really quick. First, so that you are aware, right now, all we are proposing to fund in the fiscal year twenty six budget is the kennel contract, which is a slight incre- an increase in over past years. That is that dark blue line at the bottom. And then we are also proposing the contribution, which you can see we dropped a little bit last year. And that is proposed to be level in fiscal year twenty six. The bright blue line is the total. And so that green line where the past years, that included a feline contract as well as some miscellaneous pass-through type donations. Obviously, that's more than ten years in the past, I just wanted to address it since it was there. So the next slide shows you the actual numbers. So if you're interested in all of this, this is hard to look at on this slide, but it's a reference point for you if you would like to know how much we have provided. And I've broken it out into three sections for the kennel contract, just their general contribution. Other is in fiscal year twenty six of thirty one thousand four hundred fifty dollars is the proposed increase in costs for now paying for spay and neuter at the Fix and Save Clinic that is owned by the Humane Society. And I believe those costs have previously been paid, been free to the animal control.
So so we jump from one thirty one to one eighty one, another fifty thousand dollars?
If you include those costs. And that thirty one thousand is not a lump sum, from my understanding, that would be paid out. That is something that would be paid based on the number of animals that are taken care of at that clinic. And so this just explains some of those caveats I just mentioned. All right, so this next section, just kind of for each of you to have a reference point of where the advertised rates, what kind of revenue that would generate and obviously estimates. So the first, the top is real estate. Right now, we are estimating that our current rate of thirty, of fifty eight point three cents would generate about thirty three million one sixty three in revenue. And the requested rate increase in the proposed budget would would generate two point four four six million. What was advertised is this sixty seven cent rate, which would generate four point nine million in total. So as you'll remember, and after the school board's presentation, it was voted to adopt a, or to advertise a higher rate. So that's how much revenue that would be expected to generate. That second little block is personal property. The current rate is two dollars and ninety five cents, that generates approximately thirteen point six million. At the advertised rate, you would be looking at another six hundred ninety two thousand dollars. And then I also provided the penny, did I?
Penny is now five sixty eight.
Correct. This is just a summary of the requests. Actually, there's something in here for that. This is just for you to have a summary of the requests. So two point four four six is what the county had, two two million thirty seven thousand oh eighty four is the school's additional request, so a total of four point four eight three million. At the advertised rate, there is four hundred sixty five eight thirty four of flexibility if the board were to choose to fully fund.
The advertised rate.
At the advertised rate, correct. This is just kind of a reminder, again, a little history back in how we, what we did last budget season to balance the current year budget. And it gives a little perspective into another reason of why we are where we are right now in looking at a tax increase, just a fraction of that. But the twenty twenty five budget was balanced on two hundred forty seven thousand dollars of fund balance to maintain the operations, so just general fund, fund balance. And then we also had two hundred seventy five thousand dollars that of the, from the sale of the county garage that was built into revenue for fiscal year twenty five. And then we had debt retirement, two debt retirements of five ninety nine and one twenty seven. And then those net with that fund balance, that debt payment, that radio payment that is now kind of absorbed into that. But all in all, about two hundred thousand in debt retirement that now is going towards operations in the general fund. This is a chart that provides all of the, we have kind of two sections of, two groups that you can think of, departmental and non-departmental in the county budget. So forty two point three percent of the proposed budget is made up of these departments. And you can kind of see where the priorities are there and and the distribution across the various funds. And then the next slide is similar, but it's the non-departmental, so these are more functions. So for instance, insurance, or you see contingency in there. And the various non-departmental expenses make up fifty seven point seven percent of our budget.
If I can, just one thing to mention, that neither of these address that some of these are revenue generating. So this is just the expense side.
Correct. This, this particular chart is related to the tax relief that we have been discussing. And all, it it's the exact same chart except for that far right column. And all we did was I took the various penny amounts at that particular year to say how many pennies on the tax rate is that relief kind of taken away from us. So you can see in twenty twenty five, it's estimated to be two point eight pennies at the twenty twenty five penny rate. This is just a chart that provides all of the historical tax rates, the revenue that we actually received in those years, as well as what that penny ended up being ultimately. So we always estimate the penny, but this is simply the penny divided by the tax, or the total revenue divided by the tax rate. And then this is an add-on to that chart where it provides, it's kind of interesting, and I think I have a line chart in here as well. This is the real estate tax revenue over time, but then we added the column on the far right that provides the fiscal year revenue in twenty twenty four dollars. So just trying to level out what the revenue in, say, two thousand and six would be in today's dollars. And so here's a chart that provide, that's just of that same information, a line chart. So that orange line is twenty twenty four dollars, the blue line is the actual revenue. And we just use the government's inflation calculator there to do that. This is a standard chart that we provided several years in a row now, and it is just representing the total capital and debt that's provided for this, that we pay for, for the schools, the general fund does, as well as the school operating contribution. And then that red line is the enrollment, which has been on a steady decline.
This includes the debt?
Yes, the the yellow is capital and debt.
So we keep funding to the same level, but despite the fact we got declining students? Doesn't make any sense, does it?
Could we get, could we get that chart in twenty four dollars also?
This chart? Yeah.
This has always been an interesting chart for me, the one showing student decline. Yet on the green bars, we're seeing continued level expenditures for declined students. I I never understood why we continue have, continue to fund the schools at the same level despite the fact that we're losing students every year. And so.
If if you go back and look, you know, and.
If you go back and look, you know, in '14, at the funding, and as, you know, the funding's going up until we get to...
To '21.
Right. You know, it's... Right, and I had this conversation with a couple of school board members following the meeting is, while we're level funding with the population served of students, we're actually contributing more per student than we... Than we have. Nothing's getting any cheaper. We all know this. That's why I don't have a heartburn when we say we're going to fund at the previous year's level. I don't like to call it level funding because we're funding at the previous year because we're funding at the, uh, a dollar amount to a population that's... That's going down.
The remainder of your packet was what was the same... It's just the same slides that we provided, um, on... At last Tuesday's work session, so, uh, just wanted you to have them in a cohesive package.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Questions? Discussion?
Maria, thank you for providing that slide on departments. While it's complicated, it actually looks pretty good. And I think there's a spreadsheet that goes with it.
Yes, would you like that as a handout?
Sure.
Okay, I don't have that tonight, but we'll...
Can we... Mr. Baines, can you cut the lights on, please?
I'd like to commend Ms. Steel, Ms. Callaway for, um, the clarity of this... This analysis to... You turn the pages, you understand what they're saying. You might have questions, but that's okay, they answered. But, uh, good job.
That's coming from a math person.
Mr. Chair, does the board have anything that you would like us to have prepared for questions to have answered for the town hall meeting this week?
Which is '26.
Which is two days.
Two days. Wednesday night. At TC Walker. Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Can we get the fund balance that we have, and then, the excess and all, you know, the 14% to 16%, where we set above that? What are we looking at using? And what capacity we have if we were to take it to the 14%? Those type numbers?
We...
Oh, thank you.
You ask and you get. How about that? We forgot to put it in the packet, and so, we weren't sure. Um, the... The other thing that's not on here...
Who's got the stapler?
Uh, Maria will... Will provide too, is the number of days of cash we have of, you know, as the fund balance goes down and you're trying to handle your cash flow. So, we still need to get that to you.
So, we have the town hall, but then, our meeting on Tuesday, April 1st, is going to include the utilities, public... What else we have on the agenda? Because I'm just trying to think, you know, the next budget session, work session is the 14th. So, I mean, that's not a lot of time between 14th and... Even if we moved the date to adoption into May, still, it's not a lot of time, given the number of questions I'm sure the board has regarding how we're going to deal with, um, the expenditures and possible tax rate. I mean, it's not a lot of... Not a lot of time. And I mean, if we do next Tuesday, the 1st, and we had Davenport here, that would be a long meeting. And I know that a lot of us at the end of May... Many meetings, when it's all about numbers, it's just sometimes too much. I know Mr. Hudson suggested maybe another meeting, especially with the fire department, you know, to have that as a special meeting, so we have things straightened up... Straightened out.
One advantage would say, I... And the public hearing does need to give due time to the presentation. God bless you. But, because Ms. Legg has presented this information multiple times, and it's been available in many meetings, and it's been advertised, all the rates, I don't know if we're going to have a whole lot of people coming out that are going to want to be heard. And if that's the case, then that'll take a lot of time. But, the presentation itself will be very succinct. And, um, Davenport should not take long either. It's pretty much here are the charts, and here's where you are. Um, so, I think if they're available the 1st, it would be good to push and try to get them here on the 1st as well, um, with that hearing.
Could we do them before the public hearing? Or will we have to... We would have to follow protocol and do the public hearing, then Davenport? How would you schedule the...
I... I think it'd be... We've made them wait before, but I think it's... That's really up to the chair and... During the agenda setting, but...
You guys decide how you want to structure that meeting.
And if any board members are thinking about any scenarios that you want to propose to lower what's the, uh, request, or anything that we can help you with of figuring out, what does it mean? Please let us know. And then, again, you've got the Excel sheets that you can play through and figure out your own scenarios as well.
Yeah, I think you were also looking at, for the public hearing, how... What that 4.3 cents would, um, provide, correct? For what... Whatever, I mean, the volatility, how we would spend that 4.3 cents. And if not, what happens?
Yes, we... We will be summarizing that a little bit better than I did on the first time, but there's a sheet that lists the different expenses, and we'll be, um, making sure that the public understands that during the public hearing.
And that would include the firehouse debt payments?
It... It does, but it doesn't. It includes the project. We don't want anybody to think that the project is being slowed down, but we would not be putting tax dollars towards it in '26. Because of the time it takes to borrow and make payments.
Okay, anything else?
Just one other question. Um, according to this sheet, am I right? Hold on, let me find this. Proposed use of fund balance of $3.8 million. Where can I find that in your presentation? Do you remember offhand? So, I can look at what we're looking at spending? I'm trying to find it real quick.
It was the... It's all CIP. And what we did was, we added from the original presentation to, um, adding in the, uh, software as an additional PEGO. And that's what took it up and got us underneath, uh, into that 16%.
The original package that you gave us from your...
It's just a lot.
Should be from... Should be from like the March 17th, yeah.
It's her presentation that I was...
Yeah, I was just trying to find it.
So, this is the finance, uh, finance software?
Yes, the main...
So, remind me what happened in the past, where we contracted to do finance software? And it didn't come to fruition, or am I... Am I correct in that?
We... Well, I... You can say it better than I can.
It's up to... Yeah, so, with, um, previously funded was the software for the commissioner of revenue and the treasurer.
Not for the finance department?
This particular amount would fund the, uh, new software for finance, utility billing, and, um...
So, the... So, the commissioner of revenue is okay now? They've got their software and it's running?
Yes.
Yeah, I have... So, I have on page 40, the capital fund. Proposed PEGO transfer of 2.99... That's... That's more than it should be. Yeah, to me, that should be 3.9 or 3.8 something, not 3.29.
Oh, the 3... The 3.29 is what's remaining. It, um... I'm sorry, so, yes, the 3.29 is the difference between the 25 and the 16%. So, we're actually proposing to use 3.8, which would take us down to about 15.6%.
Okay.
So...
So, again, though, I want to know... I... I can't remember what the PEGO transfer for the 2.99, what that equates out to.
Oh, I see what you're...
What items are that 2.99?
That is going to be found on... Page... Oh, we didn't have it totaled, that's why. It's another page.
I... It's not totaled because of the fact that it had, um... That was a net, looking at the net amount. And so, with the grant, we didn't want to say we're going to be using 5 million, and so, I didn't total the bottom of that page.
What... What page is that?
Thirty-six.
Thirty... Page 36?
But we can... I can provide that breakdown to get you to the 2.99.
Is that good?
And we're not using fund balance for the reserve accounts, and just the part that's the, um, grant match.
Yeah, I just... We need to have that broken out, so we can figure out if there's something we want to hunt, we want to keep. Um, because we have... So, the... Yeah, so, that's... That's what I'm looking at. So, to go... To get to the 14%, which is the bottom of our ability per our code, or our ordinance, we do have an additional 2.28 million in cash available. Okay.
So, the... The only concern over this whole overall budget, and I know I asked Ms. Callaway the question this morning, I called her up, and she graciously answered the question. The... The tax increase is... Is basically covering a lot of things, including, uh, pay raises. But I'm afraid since, you know, we talked about this when we had the meeting with the school board, uh, percentage pay raises are... Is a recurring cost that we're going to have to incur. And if the... And if the county decides they want to provide another pay raise next year, it's going to mean tax increases unless the assessment and all the other things absorb some of that. So, uh, we just have to be careful how we, um, decide with tax policy.
Cost of living adjustments.
Every year's going to go up.
And inflationary costs do increase.
That's true.
Normally, if we were better economically solid right now, we would be having enough growth to cover that. But unfortunately, we're not. We're at a lower growth than we've been in a long time, and we have the increased, um, amount of deductions. I mean, you saw, was it 2.... What is it? 2.8 cents?
So, so I...
Down in... In pennies because we are taking care of our vets and our elderly and, um...
And I understand that, but my district is probably the one district that struggles the most when you have the Guinea area, the Bena area, and those folks back there. I hate, you know, seeing them pay more in taxes when they're struggling already economically.
Our county is struggling. I'm sorry, I don't... I'm not trying to argue, but we are struggling.
If you drive through county, every district has portions where people are really struggling.
And the thing is, is we look at our...
Well, look at the schools getting... The kids getting free lunches. That's a good indication of what is happening within this county, not just here, but other counties. So, I think we need to be careful about how we...
Yeah, but the free lunches aren't means tested, you know? That's you got to make it clear.
Well, yeah. Yeah, but I think... But as Mr., um, Smith said, I think there... You see it firsthand all the time, who needs those lunches?
I've... I've said it before, and I don't mean to sound critical, but I think it's, you know, not critical of the... Of the board members, but I just don't think we would handle our private budgets the way that this county budget is run without having the security and the savings. And I think that the effort to keep taxes as low as they possibly can has put us going down and down, and people, um, every... Nobody wants to pay taxes, but the rates that we're all facing individually, the county is facing them too. Um, the board can choose not to give pay increases. The board can choose to do other things to cut... It's... It's all your decisions. But I... I want to state that I... We are not in a good place, that I'd like to see us economically growing and thriving. We are in worse off than we were three years ago.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
You know, looking at the budget, you know, I see the 2.8 pennies for the... The relief that we offer. Luckily, the state said we could offer it. You know, they thought it was a good idea to offer it, but they did nothing about it. They turned it over to us to do. So, there's 2.8 cents. The other issue is, you know, past decisions have gotten us in this place because there's still a school bond out there for $1.3 million annually for something that should have been probably quite a bit lower. And we should have been able to reap some of the benefits of... Of that, but we... The decisions were made, and... And that's not the case. So, there's a, you know, debt obligation of $1.3 million out there that probably could have been reduced if different decisions were made years ago.
Are you talking about the pay charges? Yeah. Yeah, so, the other thing, the HVAC... The HVAC for the schools, you... You proposed in your presentation that you're going to use the 1-cent sales tax. Weren't we chastised by Miares for saying it's only for new construction only? New construction only, and we can't use it for replacing machinery?
HVAC passed that test. It... It does qualify because of its expense. It's considered new capital.
Was that true?
It's new construction and major renovation.
Major renov... Well, is... Is new HVAC a renovation?
Oh, I don't know whether I've been asked the question. Have... Was I?
Yes.
Did I say yes?
And we're doing it right now.
Then if I said yes, then yes.
So, it is a major renovation?
I think a lot of it has to do with the amount of the capital expenditure.
Uh-huh.
So, if you're talking $10,000, no. But if you're talking millions or hundreds of thousands...
That's millions. Millions of dollars.
Then presumptively, yes, major renovation.
That's a major renovation, yes.
Yes.
And if I can, I... I know I sound like I'm beating a dead horse, but that's an example where other localities pay for their HVAC and PEGO. They're not paying PEGO plus... I mean, they're not paying debt and having to pay interest on it because they have enough money in the bank to take care of these things, and we don't. So, unfortunately, this is... I mean, thankfully, we have the... The 1% sales tax, and that's the tax that's paying for it.
Thankfully, you had...
Yes.
Ms. Steel, how far along are we on the salary, um, survey?
We had a meeting last week with them. They are sending out their, uh, competitor information, the request for information this week. So, they've already met with all the department heads. They've reviewed all the surveys, and they're in the process of going through all the different job descriptions.
We're not comparing Northern... Northern Virginia to...
No, they... They are not.
Okay.
Because if we determine, or it's determined this year, that we're not going to give a COLA or the steps or whatever else, I don't think we ought to spend that money.
It's... It's a small amount. It's, what is it? 49 or 39? The comp study?
Oh, to pay... It's about $50,000.
So, 49, it's already been committed. I did mention that this situation, that this is why we weren't even having the 5% that you normally set back, that we could only do 2.3, and I didn't know if that would even make it. So, um, they will put into an adjustment of, you know, I... Um, I'm going to try to stand up for the staff and keep the, um, the people motivated to stay here. I don't want to lose any more positions. If the board comes forward and wants to do something, I think what I would suggest is that you, um, set whatever amount, or a percent, or however you want to do it, of personnel funds, whether that's in comp study adjustments, or whether that's in COLA, and then, make the decision on how to distribute those monies after you've heard the results of the study. So, in other words, if you set aside money, it's in the budget. It doesn't have to be a percent COLA. That doesn't have to be decided. We would be out of a line with others if you do less than 3%, but you could still, um, do that. And... And I would... I mean, I would just like to at least encourage you to think about the flexibility of doing that versus making a hard decision when we don't have the results of the study yet. I mean, maybe the study is... I mean, I know everybody says, oh, they always find you're behind. We don't know. We've been trying to keep up, so maybe we're not off that bad. But if we are, then that should be the focus versus the COLA.
The compensation study includes schools?
No.
No.
You know, just as a comment, I mean, Ms. Steel, and I know other people, department heads, hear what's going on within the departments. And morale's a big issue that we should all be aware of. And, you know, Ms. Steel's job is to keep the morale up, you know? As Mr. Hudson said, we're looking at things at a much higher level. But, Ms. Steel is the one that has to deal with day in, day out, the people that... She has to keep motivated because you don't want to lose any more people that... Especially people with experience. You know, those... There are all the people necessary, but as people move through our ranks, you know, those people with knowledge are really, really even more important.
Okay. Anybody? Anything else? Okay. And one other thing.